Recording in progress.
All right, I'd like to call the June 6, 2022, regular meeting of the Shoreline City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Mayor Scully.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Ramesdale.
Present.
Councilmember Mark.
Present.
Councilmember McConnell. Councilmember Poby.
Present.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here. And I know Councilmember McConnell had to get home in order to get on Zoom, so if the clerk can just note when she's here, just on the times, I'm not necessarily going to see her when she shows up. After this, we are going to do something we haven't done in a while, which is the flag salute. If you can all join me in that. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Proud to announce that Shoreline has proclaimed the month of June is Pride Month, and I'm going to read the proclamation aloud. Whereas the Shoreline City Council is committed to ensuring that Shoreline is a welcoming, inclusive, and safe community for our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ, families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Riots of 1969, which is one of the major events that led to the LGBTQ rights movement, and whereas we recognize the valuable contributions of LGBTQ people throughout all areas of our community in Shoreline and beyond, and whereas although substantial gains have been achieved, many LGBTQ community members face discrimination, simply for being who they are and who they love, and whereas the struggle for dignity, equality, and LGBTQ rights continues to be important and necessary, and whereas in solidarity with the LGBTQ community, the progress Pride Flag will fly at Shoreline City Hall for the month of June. Now therefore, I, Keith Scully, Mayor of Shoreline, on behalf of the Shoreline City Council, hereby declare June 2022 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Thank you. I'm also happy to announce that we have also announced, proclaimed that June is Ride Transit Month, and that National Gun Violence Awareness Day took place on Friday, June 3. And with that, next up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right, seeing none, the agenda is adopted unanimously, and I note that Councilmember McConnell has joined us. Next up is the report of the city manager. Ms. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor just shared in declaring June as LGBTQ Month, the City of Shoreline raised the Pride Flag at City Hall in celebration of Pride Month and in support of our LGBTQ+ community members. In addition to the Pride Flag at City Hall and backed by popular demand, volunteer fiber artists created colorful rainbow tree wraps to decorate the park at Town Center on Aurora by City Hall and at Spartan Recreation Center. By recognizing and celebrating Pride Month, we have an opportunity to recognize the contributions of our LGBTQ+ community members and to acknowledge the ongoing challenges they face while striving to live openly and authentically. Seventy-eight years have passed since June 6, 1944, when more than 160,000 Allied troops landed along a 50-mile stretch of heavily fortified French coastline to fight Nazi Germany on the beaches of Normandy, France. We want to acknowledge the many veterans that gave their lives in this event and those that continue to fight throughout World War II. The city is updating our climate action plan, which outlines key actions the city will take to reduce community-wide greenhouse gas emissions and prepare our community for the impacts of climate change. The Climate Action Plan will identify climate action strategies that also improve equity, increase community resilience, and protect ecosystems in Shoreline. Your voice is important and will help us make sure that the actions we take to fight climate change benefit everyone in our community. Visit shorelinewa.gov/cclimate through June 19 to share your feedback. The 145th Corridor is a major east-west route that connects South Shoreline and North Seattle neighborhoods to businesses, parks, and services. The work along 145th Street will improve intersection safety, reduce traffic, and add better pedestrian and bicycle access. Join us for a virtual open house now through June 15 to learn more about project updates, designs, visuals, and the construction schedule for the 145th Street Corridor and 145th Street and I-5 interchange projects. You can visit shorelinewa.gov/145projects. On June 9, this Thursday, the City Council will host a State of the City breakfast, and community members and civic and business leaders are invited to attend. The event will be an opportunity to celebrate the city's accomplishments and look forward to the future. The event is free, but space is limited. You can RSVP to Heidi Costello at 206-801-2214. And you can join volunteer walk leader Dan for a Shoreline Walk event through parks in the North City neighborhood on Saturday, June 11 at 10:00 a.m. The Shoreline Walks program is free and designed for adults ages 50-plus, but open to all ages and abilities. No need to sign up, just show up at the Shoreline Stadium parking lot on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. and learn more at shorelinewa.gov/shorelinewalks. And the Shoreline Farmers Market debuted for its 11th season last Saturday to a great crowd. The market is now located at the Shoreline Park and Ride at North 192nd Street and Aurora Avenue North, with lots of room for booths and parking. The market continues every Saturday through October 1 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Visit for a variety of fresh Washington produce and organic meats and showcases local farms, artisans, and musicians. Shop for local produce, fresh berries, artisan crafts, and an array of tempting treats. EBT and SNAP cards are accepted. Many vendors accept WIC and senior FMNP checks. Please visit shorelinefarmersmarket.org for all of the details. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Next up is council reports. Are there any council reports? Councilmember Ramsdale?
Thank you, Mayor. I met this morning with members of the Stay House Stay Healthy Coalition, consisting of Will Tospurn with Solid Ground, Katie Wilson with the Transit Riders Organization, Heidi Shepherd, and Silja Sodil with the North Urban Human Services Alliance. My interest was in finding a little bit more about the rent protections that they were advocating for and that helped implement in Kenmore, and I understand that our staff at Shoreline is working on and now analyzing the Kenmore's rent protection ordinance that was recently passed, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from that staff member regarding the analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Poby?
Thank you, Mayor. On June 3, we had the Seashore Transportation Forum right upstairs. The first time we had hybrid, and so it was great to have four people here and about 20 people online. That was great. We looked at two critical things, and number one is the Linwood Link update. So we're looking about 2024 to have it open, and the beauty about that is buses that are currently taking people to downtown will now just have to take our wonderful Shoreline residents to just light rail, which is fantastic, just making the place a better place for people to live. The other thing we looked at was the E-line study, which is going to happen, and we are concerned about it in the sense that there is no redundancy right now for that specific E-line going from Shoreline straight to downtown. And so through the studies, we've put concerns across that whatever needs to be taken into consideration versus the reasons of Shoreline concern need to happen. And so we looked at where, well, it's important what is happening on Aurora. The first thing was security. How are we going to factor in security? So in terms of transportation, we're looking at how we can make those changes better for the residents of Shoreline. And I was on with Councilmember McConnell, if she wants to add a word or two. Thank you.
Councilmember McConnell? No, all right. Councilmember Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Regional Water Quality Meeting on June 1. One of the primary things that we've been working on is a guiding set of principles that is going to the PIC board. The guiding set of principles we worked on really try to talk about equity and having the county understand not only the impact of the cost of wastewater treatment bills, but also the cost of the conveyance bills that is charged by whether it's municipality or special purpose district as part of their rates, and understanding what people have to pay overall and the relationship of utility costs with that. It's going to the PIC board. I'm so hopeful that they will put it through. In the past, sometimes there has been a constant effort where it's easier for the county to put a big increase one year and then no increase the next, and that's much harder for people to budget for. Rather than 10% one year, it's easier to do five and five if that's how it's got to be. So that was the meeting. Thank you kindly, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark. Any other council reports? All right, seeing none, we go to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address us on either agenda items or items of concern. We ask that speakers introduce themselves by their name and city of residence, and the way we're going to do it in a hybrid format is we're going to call the folks who signed up for in person in the order they signed up, and then we're going to kind of call the folks who signed up for remote testimony in the order they signed up. We have 11 people sign up for remote comments, and I believe three for in person, so that gives, two for in person. That gives us two minutes per person, and Ms. Melissa Smith, if you can call two folks who are going to testify in person first, that would be fantastic.
Richard Kink is first, and then next is Juliet Scarpia, or Scarpa.
So we have a timer here?
I am going to pull it up right here.
Ready? Richard Kink, Shoreline. I am Vice President of the Richmond Beach Preservation Association, and I'm speaking tonight on Ordinance 967. While there's been a lot of opinions regarding acquiring parcel 0905, there are some key items that need to be highlighted. The city believes they will pay $110,000 for the beach parcel. I do know that in 2019, Seattle prevailed on eminent domain and paid $800,000 for 60 feet of beach and usable property of 3,653 square feet. Again, 800,000, 3,653 square feet. While staff acknowledges that Ordinance 967 is only the beach parcel based on overwhelming public comments and council members' comments, the assumption is that once that parcel is acquired, there is going to be instant access from 27th Avenue. Staff admits there is no plan or cost estimate to create a public access point. It almost sounds like the city is not aware of their own Shoreline Master Program public access regulations, such as requirement of public access to shorelines does not confer the right to enter upon or cross private property. Public access shall be made barrier-free for people with disabilities, period. The regulation does not say where feasible. Public access sites shall be connected directly to the nearest public street. The nearest public street is Richmond Beach Drive and Northwest 195th Street. Again, these are the city's self-imposed regulations as approved by the city council. The Department of Ecology's website states Shoreline Master Programs, SMPs, are policies and regulations that apply both to public and private uses. There have been no discussions regarding the cost to comply with the city's public access regulations, nor how the city will avoid any violations of the city's public access regulations. Based on the lack of any kind of actual cost estimates, I urge the council to table or reject Ordinance 967. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kink. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay. Good evening, Mayor Scully and members of the council. My name is Juliet Scarpa, and I'm a Shoreline resident and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I wanted to thank you on behalf of the many gun violence prevention advocates both with me here tonight, online, and all over America who are working hard to end this preventable epidemic, and for your continued support and recognition of National Gun Violence Awareness Day this past June 3, 2022. You join a broad coalition of individuals and community stakeholders, cultural influencers, sports teams, city officials, mayors, faith leaders, public safety officials, survivors, students, teachers, moms, and other advocates in cities all over the country recognizing this day and this past Wear Orange Weekend. This first weekend in June every year is dedicated to honoring the lives of people in the United States affected by gun violence and elevating the voices of those demanding an end to gun violence. We wear orange to honor the more than 110 people shot, killed, and killed every day in the United States. We wear orange for the hundreds more who are wounded. We wear orange for the survivors of gun violence and stand with them to say enough. We wear orange to call an end to this preventable public health crisis. We wear orange to demand a future free from gun violence in all its forms, including domestic violence, suicide, and city gun violence. We will continue to educate, raise awareness, organize, advocate, and rally for safer communities, and we are grateful for the support of elected officials like yourselves as stewards of public health and safety in our communities. We thank you and encourage you to be bold, don't look away, and continue to champion for common sense solutions to this epidemic. Thank you for your support and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scarpa. And Ms. Melissa Smith, whenever you're ready for the remote folks who are testifying.
Our first remote speaker is Joyce Tabelson. Ms. Tabelson, go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, I wanted to speak regarding the action on 967, and I support safe beach access, and I think that we should, I think that the majority of residents would like for the city to obtain that part of the beach. I do respect the people's property that live on, who live on Apple Tree Lane, and I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. But I wanted to make a couple of points. One is that when the tide comes in, people do need an exit point from Richmond Beach, and it is important to have a safe place to exit. And so I think the city should acquire that parcel, but they do need to give consideration to having that safe exit point. I also wanted to make a point that, and this is a larger point for Richmond Beach in general, and that is we need well-defined areas and times for people to go to the beach, and I think this would be something that would make it safer for the homeowners on Apple Tree Lane as well. And that, one thing I wanted to mention is that this spring, they were not closing the gate at the top of the beach on a routine basis, and so we did contact the city and the police, and they've been doing better. But I think you might want to consider having defined times rather than having them just close it at dusk. I think maybe consider 6:00 in the winter and 10:00 in the summer, because it's late in the evening that we're getting people doing drugs, drug deals, people racing around, people setting fires on the beach. And so we need to have the police shut the gate at a defined time. Or I think we should think about that, and we also need the clearly defined areas where the public can access the beach, because the residents here do want to access the beach, and people that live in northern Richmond Beach to say that they should get in their car and drive over, you know, I don't think that's really-
Ms. Tabelson, your time is unfortunately up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Suzanne Soaming.
My name is Suzanne Soaming, Shoreline resident and Save Shoreline Trees supporter. My comment for tonight's council meeting is about the 20th Avenue Northwest new sidewalk design. This part of 20th Ave Northwest leads to the regional park, Richmond Beach Saltwater Park, which does not require a 10-foot-wide chair-use sidewalk. The residents along this portion of 20th prefer a continuous eight-foot-wide sidewalk, because it will save more of the existing mature trees, an integral characteristic of the neighborhood residential setting. Three significant trees at the entrance to the Saltwater Park are in the city's right-of-way. We are asking the city to retain, protect, and maintain them as examples of the last remaining native trees in the area. By doing so, the city is standing by its commitment to preserve the character of the neighborhood and the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soaming.
Next is Nancy Malik.
Whenever you're ready, Ms. Malik. Actually, I don't see her as a speaker.
You don't see her where?
Her name hasn't popped up somewhere.
Oh, yeah, she's still muted. I asked her to unmute herself.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Malik, if you want to unmute yourself, then go ahead.
Should we move on to the next speaker and come back?
Ms. Malik, we'll return to you. Yes, go to the next speaker.
Okay. Next up is Nancy Morris.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, Nancy Morris, Shoreline resident, and very familiar with the walk along 20th Avenue Northwest to Richmond Beach Saltwater Park entrance. In January 2022, the city designed for the sidewalk along 20th Avenue Northwest was a 10-foot-wide sidewalk for shared pedestrian and bicyclist use. There was resident opposition to this original plan, as expressed in emails and public comments. As of May, the current plan illustrated on the city website is an eight-foot-wide sidewalk along 20th Avenue Northwest from Northwest 190th to Northwest 193rd, and then a 10-foot-wide sidewalk from Northwest 193rd to Northwest 195th. Think of this visual. The sidewalk will be eight feet wide for three block lengths and 10 feet wide for three block lengths. We do not understand the reason for the 10-foot-wide segment and additional cost of more cement. An eight-foot-wide continuous sidewalk is an appropriate sidewalk width for pedestrians, parents with children, tots and trikes, dog walkers and wheelchairs, those on walkers and joggers. In other words, an eight-foot-wide sidewalk is safe for all users. It was recently stated that this sidewalk is the entrance to a regional park, but this does not explain the change in sidewalk width. An eight-foot-wide sidewalk is already over the minimum six-foot-wide standard in residential zones. Please direct the city to revise the plans for the sidewalk along 20th Avenue Northwest to be a continuous eight-foot-wide sidewalk, and to consider an alternate stormwater plan to protect the three public significant trees at the corner of Northwest 190th Street and 20th Avenue Northwest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Okay, so right before Ms. Morris spoke, I heard Ms. Malik unmute herself. Do you want to try again?
Yes?
We can hear you, Ms. Malik.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you whenever you're ready.
I am speaking about the Shore Lake Arts efforts to ask for some monies to help us in our process to obtain a permanent home for Shore Lake Arts. We've lived in Shoreline for over 20 years now and have been going to events and using programs that Shore Lake Arts has every year, and we can't help but feel that, both personally and as a board member of Shore Lake Arts, that they are integral to our community. Their programs and events reach people of all ages and all interests, and those who have not had an opportunity to express themselves through the arts, we are trying to tap into our community in as many ways as possible. Our current home right now is one that is not permanent, and we feel that it is important at this time that we explore the options that we have, and our project with Art Space has been very fruitful so far, and we would like the opportunity to explore this further so that we can find a permanent home for Shore Lake Arts. The project is going to take several stages, and this is just one of the stages in this process, but no matter what we end up doing eventually, this has to happen for us to move forward. We would really like the council to approve the monies for us so we can continue on to create a permanent home for Shore Lake Arts.
Thank you, Ms. Malik. Thank you.
Next is Jack Malick.
Hello, can you hear me?
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Malik.
Hi, this is Jack Malick. I'm speaking to both items 8A and 8B. I'll start with 8B regarding the, excuse me, overhead power and Ordinance, excuse me, Ordinance 966. My only concern about this is that I don't see anything regarding-
Sorry, I didn't get that.
Whoa, that's Siri. Sorry about that. I don't see anything-
Okay, here's the station.
I don't see anything regarding the operations of buildings during that interim period. So my biggest concern here is that developers really need clarification that they can both construct and operate their buildings, you know, unless or until the underground duck bank or some other form of power is made available to them. But just building them, I mean, that's of course a big part of the process, but getting them leased up requires having them electrified, and, you know, I mean, just leaving them without, I just think it needs to be called out, that's all. So that was my one statement. Call out the actual, you know, use of overhead temporary power for the operations of buildings, you know, during that interim period while the duck bank project is under construction. And in 8A regarding 967 for the beach access, I'm all in favor of staff's recommendation. I think we should move forward with this. I think safe access is really important. I also think, you know, for the sanctity of those living down there and for the safety of those walking to and from the beach on that path, I think we should do something to address parking and auto access. You know, during the summer months, a lot more people come to this area. I mean, the draw is phenomenal, how far out from the area people start to come, just to come and enjoy the beach and all that, and to start to see that place become inundated with vehicles would be unfortunate, and I don't think it's fair to the folks living there. I think there has to be some way that we sort of address that in tandem with this act.
Thank you, Mr. Malik.
Next is Jonelle Kemerling.
Hello, I'm Jonelle Kemerling of Richmond Beach and a member of Save Shoreline Trees. My comments also concern the new sidewalk that's being planned for the west side of 20th Avenue Northwest between 190th and 195th Streets. Are you hearing me?
Yes, please continue.
Okay. The city currently plans an eight-foot-wide sidewalk for the south half and 10 feet wide for the north half of this five-block sidewalk. There is no point in pouring an extra two feet of concrete when eight feet, 96 inches, is double the ADA width requirement. According to the draft arborist report dated February 25, three remarkable trees on the northwest corner of 190th that are recommended be retained, quote, "are likely to be heavily impacted by proposed right-of-way improvements," end quote. A Pacific Medrone and two Douglas Firs. Likewise, on the east side near 193rd, again, two Douglas Firs and a gorgeous Pacific Medrone will be impacted by the new drainage system. For the protection and preservation of these trees, we ask that the Shoreline Municipal Code Tree Protection Standards and Engineering Development Manual, Chapter 33.8.C and F, be adhered to, and that the arborist recommendations in regard to excavation, root pruning, and monitoring by the project's arborist be followed. We have previously offered alternative examples of sidewalk construction using current technology. Within the collective knowledge of the 15-plus engineers in the Public Works Department, we believe there are methods to protect and preserve all the trees along both sides of 20th Avenue Northwest. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kemerling.
Brian Chow is next.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead whenever you're ready.
All right. So I'm talking regarding Ordinance 967. So, you know, I think there might be some misconceptions after the comments that was heard from the previous meeting on May 23 by the public. Everyone seems, there was a lot of, everyone seems to think that this is simply an issue of just buying a property that's for sale, but the property's not for sale. We're talking about using the power of eminent domain to seize someone's private property, which is one of the most powerful tools that a government has, and I don't think that it really should be used lightly. To propose this act of seizure of someone's personal property, I think, needs to be done after really thoughtful consideration. And after hearing the discussion from the council on May 23, I feel like that really hasn't been done at this point. There's really no- There's really no specifics that talks about what access would look like, both for the safety of the public as well as the safety of the residents around there. And so, at this point, what it sounds like is that the public, the public would potentially own a beach that it has no access to. There really needs to be a plan here to address a lot of these issues. You know, I don't, right now, the status quo, if we do nothing and delay this vote, is really nothing. The status quo people, as we speak right now, are going down and enjoying the beach. So really delaying the vote doesn't really change anything like that. I really think we need to take this moment to engage all the people who are going to be the most affected by this, including the property owner, including the people who live on the street, so that we get a better sense of what that would look like and come up with a mutual understanding of what that means if the city were to seize this beach. I would just really advocate for the council to just do the right thing and vote no and address the concerns of the people that are most affected by this potential seizure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chow.
Janet Way is next.
Good evening, council. I'm Janet Way with Shoreline Preservation Society. And you might have noticed in your inbox, I sent you a number of images of Burke Crest and the Seattle Naval Hospital site. And today, as was stated by Ms. Terry, is the 78th anniversary of D-Day. So in memory and in honor of that, I wanted to point out that the campus was analyzed in 2001 by the Washington Department of Archaeology, and it is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. There, one of the images I sent you is one of the barracks there, the original barracks. We are proposing an idea that what is needed to honor the remarkable history of this site and the service of these men and women who were stationed there is a museum of naval history at the hospital, the Naval Hospital. We also want to point out that in the Burke Crest Master Development Plan, in many places, it is reported that the city specified many times that the way to preserve the forest lands, that the wish is to preserve the forest land as a city park with access to the Landmark Chapel was specified by the city. We respectfully ask for Shoreline to honor this history and support ways to preserve it and educate future generations about it. The U.S. Navy played an important role in our history and United States history here, and it made a huge difference in our city. And so, we'd like to ask for the council and the city to work to honor those important elements at Burke Crest, the forest and the historic buildings that are there, and find a way to honor those by preserving them as best as possible. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Way.
Next is Kathleen Russell.
Kathleen Russell, Shoreline resident, on behalf of Safe Shoreline Trees. I am addressing Agenda Item 9B, Ordinance 968, Regulations for MUR 70. Since 2019, according to Safe Shoreline Trees' tracking, 2,283 significant trees have been cut down, and this is a partial count. While it has been said not to worry, Shoreline has thousands of trees, there is reason to worry. The tree replacement program is not required on 7 zones where all of the trees can be cut down: in North City, in Parkwood, along Aurora, along Westminster Way North, and most recently, look at the plans for the 399-unit Madera Development on Linden, where most of the trees will not be retained and no tree replacements. At this point in Shoreline development, we can all see what it means when trees are not retained. Clearcutting of all trees on development sites has drastic ramifications. On MUR 80 sites, 10% tree retention is required. With ordinance 968, council has the opportunity to reconsider the tree code on MUR 70 sites where none of the trees have to be retained. A city cannot maintain both mature trees and increased development unless there is careful planning. We ask the councils to stop the clearcutting of trees. I speak as a witness to what will continue to happen on MUR 70 zones unless someone says stop. When reviewing ordinance 968 regulations for MUR 70 sites, please include 10% tree retention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Peter Vitaleano is next.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Vitaleano.
My name is Peter Vitaleano. I own the property that is being considered for condemnation. I've been to the property about 40 times, but 8 of those times, I have had problems with people driving down the narrow road and interfering with my ability to use and enjoy my property. Despite this frustration, I have not closed off the beach access. I could not if I wanted to because part of the access is owned by Burlington Northern. The city wants to purchase or condemn my beach parcel and then decide later about access and safety. But is this how people purchase properties? People rarely buy a property without an inspection, unless it is an estate sale and the owner is dead. Yet I am alive. The city wants to purchase-- perhaps there are issues here that you do not know about. For example, did you know that Shoreline has been in discussions about this since January without telling me? Why has an unelected citizen, Tom McCormick, been allowed to orchestrate this sub rosa? He does not own the property. The mayor has already gone on record as stating how he expects to personally gain from this. In contrast, not many Shoreline residents will profit from this land grab. This is not going to help people who live in apartments in Central Shoreline. Most people who go to the beach want to take food and supplies. Why would they drive up here where there is no parking when they could just drive to Saltwater Park where there is lots of parking? In contrast, the mayor and McCormick see a personal benefit to them as they live right up the street. Why don't you spend this money on the citizens of Shoreline who are caring for a spouse with Alzheimer's disease? Or how about the women-- This is baloney. I don't expect to be cut off because this is my property and I expect to continue to keep--
Mr. Vitaleano, if you can wrap up. Everybody gets 2 minutes if you want to say a last couple sentences.
No. You have done this nefariously. Both you and McCormick have--
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vitaleano.
Next is Tom McCormick.
Hello, council members. I'm Tom McCormick. There's a misconception that if ordinance 967 is approved, the city is instantly going to own the property. There is going to be, I would imagine, it could be up to a year before the city would own the property. I would expect to take into account, that the city will take into account the residents' concerns and the concerns that we just heard. Sit down, discuss, meet, address the issues. It's not going to happen overnight. And if a voluntary sale cannot occur, then at some point condemnation proceedings would begin. But that's way down the road. There's a tremendous amount of time between now and then to address any of the concerns, any of the details. And the city is aware of this, and I know the city will do this. So it's not going to happen overnight. And contrary to the last speaker, there is a tremendous benefit to the local community. The public has been seeing the no-access sign forever, for decades. And then, in 1999 or 2000, a gate was installed at the north end, cutting off access. In 2010, the new bridge went up, another no-public-beach-access sign. Residents, though, wanted more. They painted a line across the road saying, "Private road, no trespassing", despite knowing that the road was owned by Burlington Northern. Then came the clampdown in the spring of 2020 without any notice to the public or input from the public. At the urging of residents, additional no-access signs and deployed police patrols. Here, records have been incredibly public. I've submitted 13 records. In the record, they've been distributed amongst people on 27th, so people know what is going on. Well, now we have a new owner who said on record he's trying to close it off, but now he says he can't, and that's fine. If he can't, then maybe we have somewhere to work. The public's been using it for decades. Let us now just pass this ordinance. To be on the right side of history, preserve safe beach access for everyone. Future generations will thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
All right, that concludes public comments. Next up is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second that.
Motion and second. Let's go ahead and call the roll as we've been doing on remote.
Mayor Scully.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramsdale.
Aye.
Councilmember Moorek.
Aye.
Councilmember McConnell.
Aye.
Councilmember Poby.
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
All right, the consent calendar is adopted unanimously. Next up is Action Item 8A, which is ordinance number 967, authorizing acquisition of certain real property located in Richmond Beach. And I believe Ms. Ainsworth-Taylor is our presenter. And before you, Ms. Ainsworth-Taylor, Councilmember McConnell has previously recused herself from this. I don't know what her intent is tonight. And I no longer see her, so I gather she's--
Yeah, I've turned off the video and I will mute myself. And I'm just going to make sure that I get back on when the next item begins. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I hear the mics are better so we don't have to, like, lean in as much as we used in the old days. So we're here again to take action on ordinance 967, which you last discussed on May 23rd with the city attorney. Since that time, you've had several numerous public comments on the proposal. Just in a summary, the ordinance 967 would authorize the use of condemnation, if the council so desires, for securing these second-class tidelands that are at the end of 27th Avenue. It's about 2.6 acres of tidelands that would be added to the city's park system. We would pay just compensation, as we're required to law, to do that. Our objective is always, before using condemnation, is to do negotiations with the property owner and hopefully for a voluntary settlement on that and get to a voluntary price. It's only after that that we would exhaust-- the city attorney mentioned to you last week that in this situation, before we went ahead with condemnation, we would come back to the council to just make sure that that's still the direction you wanted to go. With the 145th project, we've had one condemnation. We didn't come back to you on that, that we're moving forward on. Notice has been provided, as required by the statute. We did do a just compensation appraisal. Was prepared by a reputable appraiser that came up because of the difficulty of evaluating tidelands because they're just not out there on the open market to sell independently. You can't buy them from the state anymore. He set the appraised value at $110,000, which is a little over what the appraised value that King County has it at. We did order a title report for the property. That's due, and if we get to the point of further negotiations or closer to a voluntary sale or even to a condemnation proceedings, we will try to secure a property survey to make sure we exactly know what the boundary lines of the property that we're securing are. You've heard a lot about the access to the tidelands, how it would be, where it's going to be across. Of course, the tidelands can always be accessed from the south, from the existing Richmond Beach Saltwater State Park, just walking north from the property that is already owned by the city. Access from the north would be via the 27th Avenue Northwest, but we would have to require a license from Burlington Northern for some kind of pathway adjacent to their rail line. Right now, Burlington Northern is saying they won't address an application for a license until we have a more formalized plan for a pathway. So that's kind of until we can get them at least some kind of preliminary design, then they won't even give us any kind of answer. So our recommendation is the adoption of the ordinance, but we'll continue negotiations with the property owner. And we will, as I said, come back to the council before we actually file any kind of condemnation proceedings, if we need to do that.
Thank you. This isn't action items, so we normally begin action items with a motion. Is there a motion related to this item? Deputy Mayor Robertson.
I move approval of ordinance number 966.
966? You are.
967.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, would you like to address your motion?
Thank you, yes. I do believe we have a responsibility to preserve beachfront for the greater public. And for now, that will be access that is granted through Saltwater Park. I hope the city will continue to negotiate and work towards access from the northern end. I am very concerned about making sure that we don't create parking issues for the individuals who are living down there. But I wholly support the effort to continue negotiations to acquire this piece of property for the future.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Poby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, you had mentioned negotiations, so this means the property owner is, you're talking to the property owner. Is that correct?
A contracted land consultant that the city uses for these type of procedures has been in contact, and they're the primary negotiator with that, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Roberts. Councilmember Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this was probably a really difficult decision for me. I definitely see both sides of the issue. But I am going to be supporting 967, and the reason being that the access to Apple Tree Lane is through a bridge that was built with public tax dollars. And the other issue is around safety. And if people are going to be accessing those tidelands one way or another, and if they're not allowed to use Apple Tree Lane, they're going to go over the railroad tracks. And if going over the railroad tracks is just, is just a disaster waiting to happen. And I really, I'm really worried about public safety when it comes to that. So I was really hoping that we wouldn't have to go in the direction of eminent domain or a threat of condemnation. It would be wonderful if the owner would be willing to sell the property or create some sort of an easement, a public easement, allowing citizens to be able to access the north end of Richmond Beach Saltwater Park through, via the south end of Apple Tree Lane. But if that fails, I think the bottom line is that the public does need to have safe access to that beach. And I don't want to create a situation where it's going to create the danger to the public. So I will be supporting 967. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of comments here. Like Councilmember Ramsdale, I think that there is-- I think that an easement might be-- I mean, I think when we think about this, we think about what we, what we as the public and what we as the community need and want. And to me, it's not necessarily the city's ownership of this parcel, but it is the preservation of access which the public has and the community has come to expect. And I think if the, as was described in one of the comments, if the property owner decides to, and wants to sort of close off access, it puts the city in a very awkward position moving forward. And so, I do think, I mean, ultimately, I'm going to support this. But I think that in terms of sort of all the priorities that we have as a city, in terms of all the staff energy and sort of all the-- what I've heard is a great reluctance of the property owner to negotiate. I don't want to see a lot of resources being spent into this. I don't think this is a problem that is a problem today. I don't see it being a problem over the summer. I don't see it being a problem over the summer. I don't see it when there are lots of other problems and lots of other issues that the city has and we are working, need to work on. But I mean, it's not necessarily a reason to vote against it. It's just a... This is not my highest priority. We have parks in Westminster Triangle that are not... We don't have the... We haven't spent the resources to even really design what we want to see there. We have other parks in other neighborhoods that are underdeveloped. When we... So when we think about sort of where, how this fits into everything else, this is not my highest priority. But I mean, it makes sense to move forward, I think, long term. I do believe that tidelands and beach access should belong to the public. It only makes sense. And the way to get there is for the city to purchase property. And so for those reasons, I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mork.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all the eloquent comments from my colleagues here. To me, there's really two questions. The first question is, should people be able to access, walk north from Richmond Beach Park and, you know, continue north the way that they have for a long time? So that's one question. And another question that's come up is that the concerns that the public has noted about feeling that there wasn't adequate notice about this discussion and that more transparency was, would have been appreciated. So to the first question, I do believe that the public has reason to believe that they could walk north from the Richmond Beach Saltwater Park and not be constrained. So that is why I'll support this. I also appreciate the access questions. But I would encourage the city to look at how this happened and see if there's any avenues that could be improved in regards to notice for people that are on neighboring properties. We've heard this complaint on other issues. I hear it seems like the people in Apple Tree Lane don't feel they got adequate notice, and it may be worthwhile discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions or comments from council? Councilmember Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to follow up on Councilmember Roberts' comments regarding Westminster Park. It's a neighborhood I live in. And if we're using safety as a metric, I do believe that there are more compelling reasons to devote city funds towards the development of that park. Currently, that park was set aside for active and passive use. At this point, it can't be used for either. There's not even a picnic table in the park, and the grass is overgrown. We have 26 children living on Evanston Ave. We're playing in the street while cars are using Evanston as a pass-through to avoid two sets of light. So there's definitely, I feel, there would be better uses of city funds. But since we are considering this issue as a standalone issue, it deserves support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Poby.
Aye.
Councilmember... Or Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mork.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramsdale.
Aye.
Mayor Scully.
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
And Councilmember McConnell has recused herself.
Thank you. The vote passes six to nothing. Next up is action item 8B, which is the adoption of ordinance number 966, amending Shoreline Municipal Code, Chapter 1320. I believe Mr. Norris is the presenter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. And as the mayor mentioned, this is before you tonight, is action on ordinance number 966, which would amend Shoreline Municipal Code, Chapter 1320, to add a new section to that code. And as council recalls, this issue was in front of you all back in February. And then again, most recently on May 23rd, where you discussed proposed ordinance number 966. This issue stems from an issue dating back to last year that was identified with regard to Seattle City Light's Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project. Council did address the issue with temporary construction power on March 7th through ordinance number 958. This issue in front of council tonight, an ordinance 966, addresses interim operational three-phase power until that construction project would be complete by Seattle City Light. As you can see here, proposed ordinance number 966 does address that overhead interim operational three-phase power. I will not read through all of the bullet points here that speaks to what is in that ordinance. But these are the elements in proposed ordinance 966 up for council's consideration tonight. The ordinance also does address some requirements for Seattle City Light as our electrical utility service provider. And you can see there those elements that are included in the proposed ordinance as well. And finally, staff did get some input, as was mentioned on May 23rd, from various stakeholders, that this proposed ordinance impacts. So Seattle City Light, Sound Transit, members of the development community. And so their feedback, some of that feedback was incorporated in the proposed ordinance in front of council for tonight's consideration. We did also receive some kind of late-breaking feedback from Seattle City Light with regard to timelines for interim pole removal. That was provided to council as part of a green folder item on May 23rd. And then for tonight's ordinance, that language has been incorporated in proposed ordinance number 966. And with that, staff recommends council adoption of proposed ordinance 966 tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is an action item. Is there a Councilmember, Poby? Oh, yeah, question? Yeah, sure.
Okay. Thank you. So I love the fact that there were feedback from stakeholders. I'm just curious, when FCL were giving the feedback, was there any positive feedback on timelines, especially when they think the underground work is going to... You know, the start? Or I'm just curious about that. Or is it just related to when the pole, the interim pole removal is going to take place?
Good question, Councilmember. Thank you. So we, staff, have continued to meet with Seattle City Light on the Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project. So the undergrounding project that would be the trigger point for when this interim overhead power would kind of cease to be an issue, at least within the 148 station area. We have continued to receive verbal feedback from Seattle City Light that they are planning to complete the Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project by 2027, so within the five-year timeframe that's outlined in the proposed ordinance. We are also in the process of negotiating what we're calling an umbrella agreement with Seattle City Light, which outlines all of the undergrounding projects, both Seattle City Light's undergrounding projects and city undergrounding projects. And really kind of sets the stage for how we're going to partner and work together on those undergrounding projects. The Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project is one of those. And again, that getting a timeframe for completion into that agreement is what we are working towards. So we hope to have more than just that verbal commitment, have that into an agreement that we'll be working on and hopefully bringing to council for your authorization some later this year.
Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance number 966.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good motion and a second. Councilman Roberts, would you like to address your motion?
Sure. Quickly, I'd like to just thank the staff for the work they did and to sort of just work to make sure that everything, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mork.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question. One of the commenters this evening was concerned that it did not include the operation of the building. It only included the construction. Could you comment upon that, please, Mr. Norris?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. So this absolutely allows for operational power. Again, the council back in March allowed for interim or temporary construction power. So for poles to be installed, that would be for construction of development projects in this south station, in the MUR 70 zone specifically. This ordinance absolutely allows for operational power as well. So a building, a multifamily building, the Sound Transit project, can be constructed and can be operated, or can be operational. Tenants can move into the building, that sort of thing. And their operational power will continue to be served overhead until the Duck Bank project is complete.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm very happy with the way that City of Shoreline engaged Seattle City Light on this and expressed our concerns and that we continue to have an ongoing dialogue with them. And I'm also very happy that we have found this sort of interim solution to make sure that progress still happens. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember McConnell.
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Poby.
Aye.
Mayor Scully.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mork.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ramsdale.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Next up is study item 9A, which is a presentation by Shore Lake Arts on a facility market study request. I believe Ms. Terry is our main presenter. Before beginning this, I need to disclose my wife, Sarah Cohen, is on the board of Shore Lake Arts. And I think other council members might have other things. Deputy Mayor.
I will disclose that my husband is also on the board of Shore Lake Arts.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And Ms. Terry, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to introduce our two presenters this evening. I believe they are on. We have from Shore Lake Arts tonight, the executive director, Quinn Elliott, and also the president of the Shore Lake Arts Board, Tracy Thorlifson. And they are going to take you through a presentation of the information that was in your packet. Ultimately, they are requesting that the city consider contribution towards the next step in their market analysis as they're looking for a permanent location and the potential for housing for artists, so low-income housing to help artists. So I will turn it over to Quinn.
Hi, thank you. Let me see if the share screen works. And thank you so much to all of you for letting us speak this evening.
Hi, let me echo Quinn's thank you. I'm Tracy Thorlifson. I'm the president of the Board of Directors. And you already met Quinn Elliott, our wonderful executive director. Thank you again for taking the time to meet with us. As many of you know, Shore Lake Arts is exploring the possibility of creating a community arts center in Shoreline, a home for Shore Lake Arts that will also include affordable housing for artists. And tonight, Quinn and I would like to update you on our project, how things are going, and the next steps.
Oh, whoops. I seem to be having a glitch. Well, we can tell you a little bit about the slide that's missing because... Oh, there we are.
So it almost goes without saying that Shore Lake Arts is undertaking this project because the need for an arts facility in our area is so critical. And the demand for affordable artist housing is equally deep. And Quinn is going to talk to you a little bit about the need for both of those.
I just wanted to say Shore Lake Arts Board and staff certainly views an art center and affordable housing space as a community resource for Shore Lake Arts programming, but also for other local art groups. And I can speak most directly right now to our most urgent need, which is space for classrooms. This summer, we greatly expanded beyond what we had done in the past, youth art visual arts camp. We have a total of 180 spaces. 176 of them are full, and there are 80 children on the waiting list. We could easily, and that's with very little marketing, almost exclusively the Peach Jar through the Shoreline School District. We are also working to offer some adult classes this summer. They will all be on plein air with Crookedburg and with the City of Lake Forest Park because, again, we don't have interior space. There's also a real need, both for our own programming but community programming, for community event-based casual performances, perhaps a place where an installation like the Afrenda for Dia de Muertos could stay up for longer than a week or two. We'd also love to include a space that could be used flexibly for smaller performances, 100 to 150 people, and for rehearsal space. But beyond the space for arts and arts programming, there's a critical need in Central Puget Sound for affordable artist housing. Arts Fund did a COVID cultural impact study released this January, and they found what was, to me, a devastating departure from the arts in our region. People are either leaving the sector or the whole area largely because of the cost of living. And the waitlist for the four local artspace housing projects is 1,000 people long. And it's that long because they cap it at 1,000.
So when Artspace agreed to do the preliminary feasibility study for us, we felt like we'd won the lottery. They are the actual leading expert in developing arts facilities for arts organizations and affordable artist housing. But better yet, they have local ties. They've built four projects in Seattle and Everett, and they've consulted with communities across the state, including Olympia and Bellevue. And we're confident that their expertise can guide us to the right result here.
And Artspace, a great thing about them is, A, they continue to own at least the artist resident portion of the building. And with all of their buildings, it's an interesting and community additive based on other studies, group of residents. But they also only build buildings that are self-sustaining. So nobody has to come back and ask you for money once the project is built.
Artspace's feasibility study included a preliminary site analysis, and they held four focus groups in a public meeting. The focus groups included a group with artists and arts organizations in our area, a group called Equity in Space that centered on the voices of BIPOC artists and arts leaders, another group on civic leaders, and a final group on funders and finance leaders. And at our public meeting, more than 55 people attended. The report was released in January, and you can see it on our website. You can read the whole thing. And while it's interesting, it is over 60 pages. Bottom line, Artspace found that the project was feasible and that there was broad public support, but that the biggest challenges would be funding and finding an affordable site. One of their findings was that there was consensus on the basic project concept, a mixed-use, affordable live-work development space that provided a home for Shore Lake Arts and affordable housing for artists. You'll see, again and again, you'll hear us talking about the need for flexible, large event space, where there can be a performance or community coming together for an arts event or a visual arts exhibition. That kind of space just doesn't exist in our city right now. Quinn?
I'm working on it. Oh, dear. Oh, so one thing that we thought was really exciting is Artspace found the community that they interviewed had goals that really closely aligned with the goals of the City of Shoreline and Lake Forest Park, with Shore Lake Arts' own goals, and with Artspace's goals, whether it's addressing racial disparities or supporting creative businesses and creative nonprofits, or talking about making sure that anything, whether it was a space for art programming or for residents, really focused on transit-oriented development. And there's really a strong appetite amongst artists that we interviewed around space, to collaborate, to make work. And although the artist community viewed itself as kind of hidden, kind of working in isolation, they also saw... in isolation, they also saw really positive sides to the local arts community. They talked about how innovative it was, how diverse it was. And Artspace found that with Shore Lake Arts as both the catalyst and convener, they see a real opportunity for them to invest in the North King County Shoreline Lake Forest Park area. Nah, sorry. Sometimes I seem to be having connectivity. Whoa, whoa.
So.
There we go. I think that's right.
No, no, it's not. You need to go back to political know-how. Anyway, another finding of the study was that the political know-how and will in the community existed. And the study organizers commented to us on how engaged the participants were in our focus groups and how unusual it was for so many of them to stay for the entire Zoom meeting. They were also, Quinn, go back one.
I can't. It's not doing it.
Okay. The study organizers also commented on how unusual the political support that we had was, and were especially grateful for the city council members from Shoreline who attended the meeting and from Lake Forest Park. And we also want to recognize that we had representatives from King County and the state legislature who participated in the process. And collectively, you all really impressed Artspace, and we are so grateful. So as I mentioned, Artspace identified funding as the biggest challenge. An Artspace project costs between $20 and $25 million and takes an average of five to seven years. But one of the great things about working with an expert like Artspace is that it's familiar with projects like these, both locally and nationally. Once a project like this gets off the ground, Artspace knows where to look for funding and how to apply. They also know how to assess whether a community can support an Artspace project and whether a nonprofit partner can generate interest and passion for the project and lay the groundwork for success in the future. And that's the step we're at right now.
And in another exciting note, while four parcels were kind of identified in this early pre-feasibility study, the basic idea was there are still site parcels that are large enough and meet the requirements for an Artspace building. They did let us know that usually the site parcels that are identified early on are not where things end up being built. Um, there we go.
So the findings of the preliminary feasibility study really resonated with the board, and we voted to move forward with seeking funding for the next two Artspace studies. The Shore Lake Arts Board strongly supports the concept of helping secure affordable housing for artists in Shoreline and Lake Forest Park because this goal completely meets our mission, and we can see major opportunities for synergy. But regardless of what happens with a partnership with Artspace, we need additional space to meet the community's needs. And these two additional studies will help us determine how to move forward, whether we're looking for leased space or to own our own building, or whether we end up moving forward with Artspace in a building that combines affordable artist housing and a home for Shore Lake Arts.
Yep. There we go.
The arts market study will take about six months and costs $35,000. The project concept refinement workshop can take place during that six months and costs an additional $12,500. Artspace recommended that we get going with these as quickly as possible, not only because real estate costs are rising, but also because we need to lay the groundwork for seeking funding for future pre-development costs. Tonight, we're asking the City of Shoreline for $20,000 to $25,000 to help us move forward with these studies. And of course, we have already sought and are continuing to seek funding from other sources. But we're hoping that Shoreline will continue to be an amazing partner.
And as we move forward, we just wanted to reassure the council that we will continue to involve broad parts of the community as stakeholders. We invite input certainly from you, from the city staff, and we will do our best to answer anything you have. And we are really extraordinarily grateful for Shoreline City Council and the City of Shoreline's understanding that the role of the arts in a community and helping a community knit together, and we are most grateful for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Thorlifson and Ms. Elliott.
I can stop sharing.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions? This is a study item. So are there questions or comments from council? Councilmember Poby.
Thank you so much, Tracy and Quinn, for such an artistic presentation. It's always great when you have to improvise. That's the beauty of arts. It tells us how the arts is absolutely needed in our community. And so through the pandemic, if you study economically and look at other industries, you're going to see that the arts industry suffered the most because there were no performances, because artists did not have places to either live or performing opportunities were no more available. And so this is absolutely incredible and needs the maximum support from the city, definitely. But what I'm curious about is, I thought you were going to ask for $47,000. You're asking for $25,000. Where are the other funding coming from?
Well, we will ask the City of Lake Forest Park. We have an individual donor that will contribute some. We have a request into Amazon. We had a request into King County Council, which it looks like that avenue is unlikely for this round, but there's a lot of support for the next round of funding, which is a great deal more. And then for culture, the Building for Equity Cultural Development Program, the grants open up for application kind of at the end of the summer. We would not know until December, but if we were able to identify the first $35,000, we would move forward with that and then hope for additional funding that would come, we would know about a bit later with the project concept refinement, and we will ask for culture for that. In addition, not at this round, but the state of Washington, every two years, has an arts building fund. We're not eligible right now because we're in pre-development phase, and you must be in a binding agreement for either long-term lease or to own a property to be eligible for that. But the great thing is, when the next one opens up in roughly April of 2024, we should be on that target. It's an amazingly good time for us.
And the other answer to your question, council member, is if you have any suggestions for additional sources of funding, we would love to hear them.
That is true.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Roberts?
I'll just say that I think I am excited by this project. My comment is that I think from our council, I think we should wait until the normal budget cycle and we look at it holistically with all the funding for all the organizations. It sounds like we, there is not, the Shore Lake Arts Council is not going to get this funding by even the end of the summer. So I mean, I think that there is a.
Hold on, please, Ms. Elliott.
I think there is a, we don't, we can wait until sort of the normal process and go through it then. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Elliott, would you like to respond?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Roberts, we think that with the City of Shoreline's support, we would have the ability to have the funding in place by the end of the summer and start, or at least enough to start the market study. And again, the project concept can happen anytime within the next six months. So we feel that we would have the funding in place for the first $35,000 to start right at the beginning of September, as Artspace recommended.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark?
Thank you. I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you for spending the time coming. I so agree with my colleagues that arts are an important part of the city fabric, and I really appreciate your taking the time to work with us on this. But, Mayor, I have to show my ignorance here. I don't understand how the gifting of public funds, which is so important in the special purpose district world that I came from, does that not apply to this situation?
Ms. King? Sorry. Ms. Taylor, you're in her seat.
Let me make sure my mic is on. Yeah, it is. It's good. So the mic's on?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, good, yeah. There'd be the consideration for, we do the analysis, but cities and counties commonly provide grants for affordable housing for other public purposes. It's defining whether it's a public purpose, the building of the art society, and how that benefits the public. But I don't think this would necessarily be astray of that obligation.
Thank you. I could understand the affordable housing component, but I wasn't sure if the support of arts would. So thank you for that answer.
Further questions or comments?
Councilmember Mark, if I could just also add, one of the exciting things about this proposal is that it does combine the affordable housing element with providing a home for Shore Lake Arts, and we feel like this is a win-win for the city because it meets both needs and furthers both public goals.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Robertson?
Just humor me briefly. The very first conference that I went to as a council member, I heard a keynote speaker that was talking about art and communities and how, just a reminder that we can't just build safe utilitarian communities that are battleship gray and expect them to thrive, that it's so important to have color and, you know, enrich our communities with art. So I keep coming back to that, and I would love to see a project this cool in our city. I'm much more comfortable with this number, $20,000 to $25,000, than some of the other numbers I think I'd heard bandied around earlier. So ultimately, I think I would be in support of granting some funds to the direction of the Arts Council to keep this project moving forward. So thank you and good luck.
Councilmember Poby, did you have a comment? Okay, all right. Anyone else? All right. I support this also. I agree with Councilmember Roberts' comment that in some ways, it would be better to do this as sort of an omnibus package, but the proposal is to draw extra money from general fund. So it shouldn't, I mean, that affects every, you know, any time you spend money from something, it's money that's not available to spend elsewhere. But this is not a specific pool of money that's going to social services that we are then depriving some other human service of. So under those circumstances and given, you know, the relatively small dollar amount, I support this. I didn't hear consent calendar. I heard that we'd like some further debate or, Councilmember Roberts?
I don't think we have a full proposal before us. I mean, we have sort of a general thought. I don't see an ordinance. This was a study presentation. I don't know if we're, where we are. I mean, I know it'd have to come back to us regardless, but I don't think that there's a formal proposal at this point. This was just a ask and a presentation from Shore Lake Arts rather than sort of a strict ordinance or a budget amendment.
Ms. Terry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, what I was going to do is take the information that I heard tonight and if I heard support, we would include this in a budget ordinance. Currently, we're scheduled to bring a budget ordinance in July back to council. You may recall that we had some of that discussion with some of the planning staff positions, and I would include that as an item. And it'll come as a discussion item first, and then the council will take action on that at a later meeting.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from council? All right. Thank you again, Ms. Thorlifson and Ms. Quinn, and we will, it sounds like we'll be considering it further in July.
Thank you so very much for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Agenda Item 9B, which is a study item on discussion of Ordinance Number 968, which would amend chapters of SMC 20 to modify regulations for development within the MUR 70 zoning district. And I think Mr. Bauer is presenting remotely, correct?
Correct.
Hi, Mr. Bauer, whenever you're ready.
All right. Great. Thank you. Let me just pull up my screen here. Okay, great. So I'm here tonight to talk about the MUR zone, excuse me, MUR 70 zone amendments and proposed ordinance 968. The Planning Commission recently issued their recommendation, which is an attachment to your packet tonight. Their recommendation is to approve the proposed Development Code amendments before you. So these amendments really evolved, or have evolved, over the last many months. As you recall, we had a joint council-planning commission meeting back in October where several ideas and concepts were discussed. And since that time, the Planning Commission went right to work. They've held about four study sessions on the proposed Development Code amendments and have really narrowed it down to two components related to further parking reductions in the MUR 70 zone, as well as streamlining the building height limitations through the development agreement process. And really, the purpose of these amendments, it's important to remember, we're refining the MUR 70 zone and really maintaining the core elements of the sub-area plans that are so important. So first, I'll talk about the proposed parking reduction amendments. The amendments would allow up to 50% reductions in the minimum off-street parking requirements in the MUR 70 zone, and this would apply only to developments that include 100 dwelling units or more, or up to 10,000 square feet of commercial space or more. And with that, there'd be a condition that the development would provide a transportation demand management plan. And so this would be a project-specific plan where we look at ways to offset or minimize the overall parking demand on a development as a tool to minimize the demand, and so we're offsetting the minimum off-street parking requirement up to, again, a maximum of 50%. And then the height amendments, the base height limit stays as is within the MUR 70 zone, so the base height is 70 feet. And then also, just as important, the maximum height stays as is. And really, what these amendments do is change how you get to the maximum height. So currently, there's a development agreement required to go up to the maximum 140 feet, and along with the development agreement, which is a city council action, development would need to hold a public hearing, and there's a whole slew of other development standards and requirements that are required to get to that maximum height limit. So what these proposed amendments would do is that would remove the requirement for development agreement. It would require what's called an administrative design review or an ADR, what we commonly refer to as, it's an administrative review, so it's done at the staff level. But we'd be reviewing the development proposal for consistency with the comprehensive plan and also making sure there's adequate infrastructure and facilities and services to serve the development. And that would be in addition to the development holding and neighborhood meeting. The, going back to the sub-area planning effort back in 2015 and even earlier, and then also to those early environmental documents that were adopted with those sub-area plans, it really talked about having a public process and the importance there as part of getting to the maximum height. And so we felt that a neighborhood meeting would be one way to achieve that, kind of the public notification and the process as an early opportunity to incorporate comment and feedback into a development proposal. And then going through, I'll hit through quickly here, all of the development standards that would be a condition of getting up to the 140 feet. So some of these are changed slightly from what currently exists, and some of them are the same. And so the first one off the bat here is the affordable housing requirement. This stays unchanged, and this would essentially just become a development requirement of going up to 140 feet. The next one down is slightly changed, but I think the spirit or the intent of the provision is still maintained. So a development would need to choose one of the following requirements, either the 10,000 square feet of commercial space, or they'd need to provide 30% of the ground for area devoted to a neighborhood amenity, such as a non- for area devoted to a neighborhood amenity such as a nonprofit office space, um, or other community, um, flex space. Uh, next, a development would need to provide some park or plaza or open space in, within the development. Uh, they'd need to provide 1% of the building valuation devoted to, uh, art or place-making amenities within the development. And then, uh, they'd need to provide subarea improvements, either through utility improvements, off-site, uh, th- those could be onsite or off-site, um, off-site frontage improvements. So if there's a sidewalk gap, for example, between the development and the station, uh, look for opportunities there to improve those or other, um, uh, off-site or subarea improvements such as wayfinding signage, transit stop enhancements, or something along those lines. Uh, what's being proposed to be removed, uh, so the development agreement requirement, like I said, is being removed. It's still being maintained within the code, so it's always an optional requirement should someone choose to. There are, or can be benefits to a development such as vesting if they had a phased, uh, development, they wanted to vest in over several years and, um, phase in the, the development of a site. They could still have that flexibility through a, a development agreement. Uh, proposed to be removed is the requirement for lead gold. Um, we're, well, two things. So one, um, developments within the MUR 70 zone are required to be building to a built-green four-star or better in terms of green certification, which is roughly equivalent, if not slightly better, to lead gold. Um, it's not a direct apples-to-apples comparison, but it, it's comparable. And also what we're finding through the city's existing deep-green incentive program, uh, many of these earlier developments, uh, that are in the permitting process right now have opted to construct to lead platinum, which is, um, a higher level of green certification. And in exchange, they get to, uh, utilize some of the incentives through that program. Proposing that we remove the, the requirement for structured parking, um, again, what we're finding is just market forces are, uh, delivering structured parking in a lot of these developments. And in the, uh, in the scenario where a development's not providing structured parking, we have design standards that could, uh, either screen that or cite that within the site, uh, without, um, and still address some of those concerns without having to mandate structured parking. Um, we're proposing to remove the requirement for purchase of TDR credits or transfer of development right credits. So right now, we don't have a, a program fully, um, in place. Um, there will be one, uh, coming to the, uh, Planning Commission for consideration later this year, and so this is something that we could write back into the code at some future date or, um, utilize in other ways. But for right now, we're proposing that it be removed. Um, kind of similar terms with the district energy. Again, uh, we have past planning work and studies to show that this isn't really a, a feasible requirement on a individual development basis, but perhaps at a, kind of a bigger scale, um, if multiple developments were to pull together and utilize, um, some district energy, uh, plan or concepts, they could do so. Again, it'd be more of an optional thing as opposed to mandating it. Um, and so the, after tonight's discussion, um, we're scheduled to come back at the June 27th, uh, council meeting, um, for potential action or follow-up if there's any, um, additional discussion or, or information that the council's seeking tonight. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Rambis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for that excellent, uh, presentation. I was looking, looking through the, the staff report, and I thought it was really well-written. Um, one thing that I, that kind of did kind of pop out for me, um, was the change in contribution towards, um, parks. And I noticed that, that currently, it's a 2% building valuation contributed towards parks, open space art and, or recreation. And then in the proposal, that, that, um, it was, uh, that percentage was cut to 1% and then eliminated parks as a recipient of that funding. So that concerns me a lot just because there's, uh, we know that when there's increased density, there's an, there's an increased propensity for, uh, mental illness such as depression or anxiety, and when you're not providing those opportunities of public open space in those high-density areas, um, that, that, that public open space is a mitigating factor on some of those mental, mental health issues, that, uh, that, that reduction in, in funding towards parks kind of alarmed me, alarmed me. So if you can kind of tell me a little bit more about, like, how, how that change is going to impact, um, the, um, the amount of, uh, the funding going towards, uh, devoted towards development of, uh, open parks, um, I mean, development and, um, and purchase of, of open, uh, public space. Thank you.
Um, yeah, if I may. So the, um, so we're proposing that that be removed and, and slightly revised. So one, um, when this provision was first adopted back in, um, I believe it was in 2015, um, at that point in time, there was no park impact fee in place for the city. And so, um, currently there, we do have an impact fee, uh, in place, so every new dwelling unit is paying into the park impact fee fund, which goes into funding parks. And so this is a little bit duplicative in that respect. Um, and then, so that was kind of the, kind of the broader provision for park space. And then in addition, we had this other standard that talked about providing 2% of the building valuation, um, also for parks. So again, it was sort of redundant, and so we thought, you know, there's other ways to potentially repurpose and, again, to capture some of the intent of providing some, um, public amenities. And so, uh, kind of following the model of the 1% for arts, uh, concept, um, that was one idea that I think was brought up at some point, and so that's where the, um, the proposed amendments landed.
Um, yeah, as a follow-up, um, I, I, I'm curious, like, how, how that would impact the amount of funding going towards, um, um, our, kind of a park impact, uh, or park, park fees. Um, I'm assuming the cutting, cutting it from 2%, one, 1% would reduce the funding available, um, devoted towards parks. Thank you.
Ms. R, go ahead, and I actually, I'm going to cross off the same question I had. What, what I was hoping for is exactly that, but in, in sort of a bottom-line number, like, we're going to see approximately 500,000 less for parks, or it's not going to make any difference, or whatever, whatever modeling you've done.
So we can, we can follow up with some real numbers on that. I mean, I will say, so again, uh, this provision is written in, currently in the code, only for those developments utilizing the development agreement process. And so there's really, um, with today, of course, we've not had anyone utilize the DA process to achieve the maximum height. So in real numbers, there's no impact, um, right now, but yes, so, um, we could, we could look at some approximate building valuations to get a sense of order of magnitude of what those numbers could look like as developments started to come in.
Anything further? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Bauer, I really appreciate all the work that went together with putting this, uh, on, and I appreciate the work of the Planning Commission, but I have questions that, that fall into two general categories. The first is the neighborhood meeting. Uh, we've been, uh, the receipt of, of a variety of complaints about the neighborhood meeting, uh, from citizens who do not see that their voice is heard. Could you explain how that works? If someone complains at the neighborhood meeting, is, is the developer required to make any changes?
Yeah, so generally, the neighborhood meeting, it occurs prior to any formal, uh, building permit or development application being filed with the city. And the intent that it's being, it's being held prior to that application point so that there is that opportunity for real input and potentially real, um, real change and, um, and however, that's not always going to be the case for everything. And so the neighborhood meeting, a, an applicant would be, um, essentially notifying all of the property owners within 500 feet of the development site. And they would hold a neighborhood meeting, at which point they'd present the, the proposed development and some of the specifics in terms of what they're wanting to do, and then gather any feedback or input from the people attending that meeting. Um, as, and then from there, they provide a kind of write-up summary of what the neighborhood meeting, uh, kind of what they presented, um, and then the feedback that they heard from the community, and how they're incorporating or not incorporating into the development proposal, um, the feedback that they heard. And so, um, you know, depending on what the, the scale and the, um, I guess, the specific comments and feedback are, you know, sometimes they're going to be easier to incorporate or more, um, make more sense, and then sometimes they, they may not. And so that's where that neighborhood meeting summary is kind of the piece, um, that goes in, um, to the, into the development permit application.
Let me ask it differently then. The development agreement, uh, under a development agreement, if there is a lot of neighborhood input, uh, is there changes that are required that way, that in the neighborhood meeting, it's just a recording of issues? Does the city have any, if you're following code, uh, in both cases, does the city have any alternatives in one way versus the other?
With the, the primary difference here, with the development agreement as it's currently written, it's a legislative action, and so it's ultimately a city council decision to approve or not approve the development agreement. Um, and the, also important, there's a public hearing required prior to any action on the development agreement, where, you know, it's a little more formal than a neighborhood meeting where you're, um, gathering public testimony on the proposal at hand.
Thank you. That's very helpful. The other line of questioning I have, just to make sure I understand, is we understand that built-green four-star is requirement at the get-go, so that's not in discussion. If you want to go, uh, to 80-foot a height, you have to leave 10% of the significant trees, correct?
Uh, correct. That'd be why, yes, yes.
Currently, that's how it is, and that's how it's proposed.
Correct.
Then if you want, if you want to go to, uh, 90 feet a height, do you still need the 10%, uh, significant trees saved? Or do you have the choice of either 20% or the deep-green incentive?
Yes, you could do one of those. You wouldn't necessarily need to do both.
Okay. And then at the 140 feet, uh, you would not be required to have either significant trees or the deep-green incentive?
Correct.
So, um, I'm, I am concerned that you've pulled out of the 140-foot, uh, anything above the built-green four-star. And, uh, climate change is the existential threat of our time, and putting 1% to art doesn't do it. We need to do something, uh, if we're going to develop that extra height, there should be some environmentally more significant thing that's part of it. And, uh, without exception, I don't have problems with this, uh, this work, but I strongly object to the removal of all of the environmental components beyond the built-green four-star, which is already there, uh, for this extension. And I will oppose as written. Thank you.
Would you like to respond, Mr. Bauer? You don't have to.
Um, yeah, no, no.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, thank you for asking the neighborhood meeting, uh, question because I also had that question. However, I'm not sure I got an answer that was satisfactory. Uh, so let me ask it a different way. And again, I wasn't feeling well enough that something like this, I would actually go back through lots of those planning commission, um, you know, summaries, because those, those answers might be there. But, uh, forgive me that I didn't have the time to do that. I am not sure, the neighborhood meeting meets the goals of the neighborhood, uh, in that what is the, now, I'm looking at my notes and they're a little sloppy, so I'm, I'm getting a little lost in my own notes. Um, what is the, the goal here for the neighborhood meeting versus something, some other way that the neighborhood is actually going to, number one, be heard, but number two, their voices will be effectively making some, some changes that, you know, if, if the roar is loud enough, will, will that impact what the developer will do, whether they have to do it or whether they want to do it? And, uh, I said quite a lot in that mouthful, so was there enough for you to grab onto? And maybe with your answer, I'll, I'll be able to be, you know, to further ma- make another for a comment about. But that neighborhood meeting topic really still had me stumped. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm hearing concern that perhaps a, a lack of accountability from you had a hearing what perhaps concerns or feedback or input is at the neighborhood meeting, and how, or is that even incorporated into a development application? Is that sort of the, the root of the concern there?
Yeah. And, and I'm trying to voice what the public would be asking if they could, you know, channel through me, because, because that's what it's all about to me, is, is this enough for the public?
Yeah, and, and that's a big question, and I don't think I can answer that. And I think, um, what I can say though, uh, so this is following, um, the neighborhood meeting process that we currently have in place, so, um, it, not that it's a, uh, well, for one, it's sort of, you know, let's try to stay, um, for ease of administration and for consistency and kind of all that for the development side of things, you know, let's follow kind of the path that we already have within the code. And so that was kind of the, the process approach we took in terms of including the neighborhood meeting process that we currently have. Um, and really, what it boils down to are the decisional criteria in which a decision would be rendered on the overarching application. And so that's where, uh, we're, we'd be looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan policies, we'd be looking at consistency with all of the development code standards. Um, and so, uh, you know, if someone, yeah, I, I guess I would just leave it at that. You know, the neighborhood meeting is definitely one important aspect of it, but also we'd need to be weighing kind of consistency with all of the other adopted codes and regulations in place.
So what I'm hearing is that, that, not the hopes, but the, but the thought is that there's enough in the codes already to, to effectively protect the neighborhood from something that is so out of line with their expectation. Um, that, that we hope that we have enough codes that, uh, that are in place that will give us what we want in this city for MUR 70, but n- not something that, you know, later on we'll go, wow, how did that one happen? So I, I'm assuming that that's why staff made the recommendations, that this was a, uh, uh, maybe a more efficient vehicle to, to go about instead of the other way. And again, this is the kind of thing that any of us really need to go do enough of those planning commission meetings to probably hear that discussion. So, um, I, I'm satisfied enough with, with what you said, that you're, you know, you absolutely can't say for sure, but that, uh, that with everything in place, it is, you know, it, it will suffice more or less. And a good developer will probably take some of those suggestions if they can tweak their, their, their project. But other than that, if it's something that won't work with their plans, they will just politely continue with, with their, with their design, correct? Uh, he can't speak for everybody. The, um, the other question I had was, when, um, and I guess it was actually going back to Councilmember Moore talking about the tree issues of 1%. When I, when I, when I'm looking at an MUR 70 project, it's going to be four, six lots, maybe bigger if, if. maybe bigger, if something was assembled that, that much larger. And I know that there is some assemblage much larger than that, but we're still talking about properties that already have homes on it, so a percentage of trees that already exist is not really a lot of trees that they would be obligated to save. Is that, is that pretty close to a true statement?
Yeah, it's going to vary depending on the lot, depending on the circumstances and the existing number of trees.
Yeah, so the percentage might scare us, but, I mean, I already know on the properties that I see, three trees, maybe on my property, that are large enough that might be on the count, but they'll be in the middle of a project, so they'll probably have to go. So they're going to need to try to save the perimeter trees unless some crazy little design, you know? So that percentage to me doesn't mean as much when you're thinking of just a huge mass on an assemblage of former single-family lots, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so again, it would be a percentage of the existing significant trees. And, and also, yeah, that provision is existing currently, and we're not proposing that it change or be removed. We highlighted that in the report, just to show the different ways in which someone could go above the 70-foot base height limit currently.
Yeah, and then I have one more question. The reason why I ask all these questions is I do have property in this area, and very well aware of what's possible and what's impossible. And we really don't want to prevent these developments from happening, but we also don't want to, you know, just have a big concrete slab all over the, you know, all over next to light rail. But the final one was, I am not that concerned about the percentage for the arts that, that looks like it's been reduced, but because we're talking about projects that are in the millions of dollars, and even per person living in there, I still think the city's doing okay, correct, with, with that kind of percentage? We, we didn't want to be greedy, and we're, and we're really getting quite a lot of bang for, for the kind of zoning that we're getting this percentage out of, correct? Is that too much?
I, I don't have a complete comparison of how shoreline might stack up with some of our neighboring jurisdictions, for example.
Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot, but that's the way I look at it, that obviously there was enough discussion on the planning commission to, to feel pretty good that we weren't giving things, we weren't ratcheting down the money that is due us for, for the arts, because I totally am a proponent that, you know, we can't live in a concrete slab, art is what makes us human and compassionate and healthy, and all the things that Councilmember Rams, Ramsdale said. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will apologize for not getting these questions in earlier, but I've been thinking about them all week, or actually for, actually even longer than that. And when we first, as a council, we're thinking about how we can sort of incentivize and how we can make sure that the projects within the MUR 70 zone are able to succeed. And one of the concerns of Councilmember Mayor Hall was the, this sort of question of how do you provide some certainty to developers, coming in, looking at the code, and trying to figure out, okay, what can I build here, without sort of having to get their lawyers involved and their land use attorneys and try to figure, okay, well, what does this really mean? And, and that was the justification of this entire project, and I think as the council then really was supportive of this, is sort of, this is a way to increase certainty, and for both the community and the development community. Because, and I think, and this is all very good. I do have some questions that I want to ask, and again, I apologize for not getting them to you earlier, but can you first describe the process of the administrative design review? How does that work, and what's the normal sort of expected timetable for administrative design review to get to a decision?
Yeah, so the administrative design review is, as the name indicates, it's an administrative decision, so it's a director's decision done at the staff level. And the, the application is first made, this application, and it's important to note, comes prior to any building permit or development application. Oftentimes, or the main tool that we use currently for the administrative design review are departures from the adopted design standards. So this is an existing process that we use, that developers are familiar with. What we've seen so far is I think every one of the, kind of the, the larger-scale MUR 70 developments that have come in have gone through this process, just by virtue of needing to request some minor departures or deviations from the design standards. And this can be anything as minor to like the, the depth of the awning that's overhanging the sidewalk, providing weather protection to, to some of the facade modulation or materials and things of that nature. So it's a, like I said, a process that I think the development community that we've been working with is pretty familiar with. So in this instance, we would utilize this process as a way to review a development proposal for consistency with the additional development requirements to achieve the maximum building height, and still provide some level of certainty that it's, you know, there's no additional hearings or kind of uncertain process that's lengthy. Again, administrative review, so it's a little more streamlined than having to hold public hearings and, and everything. The review timeline is going to really just vary depending on the volume of applications and work in review at any given point in time. Generally, I think, you know, it could fluctuate anywhere between eight to 12 weeks or so from the time an application is submitted until that first review comment letter is And some of that depends, also, I mentioned the deep-green incentive program earlier, so there's an expedited permit review incentive through that program, which again, many developers are utilizing that, which kind of moves them to the front of the line, so to speak, for the, the application review.
So, in a nutshell. Yeah, you're, thank you, perfect nutshell. So your, your administrative design review timeline right now is sort of eight to 12 weeks is your turnaround to that first, first letter. And, but, and this first letter is not even before a building, before the actual development is submitted, correct? And then there's another timeline from the time developments first submitted to that first review, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're building in eight to 12, in an ideal scenario, we're building in another eight to 12 weeks in the front end for these projects, is that fair to say?
That's fair to say, yes.
Okay. I wanted to, I, I, I think this makes sense. I have some specific questions I'll send in to, to you, into the council, but my concern is that there is no, there's no expectation set in the code of that the administrative design review will be done by, within a certain timeframe. That as, even recognizing complexities and our goals, and we have commitment, or we have a discussion coming up next in July about adding more staff to the planning department. But if the goal is to try to get developments in, I mean, I know from the development community that time often equals money, and so we're building in a, a process that would have an indeterminate timeframe before even permits can be submitted. So I'm concerned, I, I have a concern that there's not that sort of expectation built in that this product, this administrative design review process will not take an indefinite amount of time. So that's my first sort of question. My next question is looking specifically at the code 11C and 11E. 11E talks about the, the developer shall provide sub-area improvements, but there's no discussion of cost or percentage or anything there. It's just the developer shall provide these amenities, without really any discussion of limitations or expectations there. And so without sort of a percentage or without some sort of cap of cost, it's hard to say, okay, to say in the code, you're going to provide these improvements, and they're good things, but there's no, there's nothing to say that the city or someone can't just keep adding and say, we want this, and we want this, and we want this, and you as a developer are going to pay for these public improvements in the public right-of-way, or underground, or wherever it is. Similarly, in 11C, it talks about providing space to the public, but it doesn't describe or say how much space is needed to be provided to the public. You look into the, the design code, and it talks about, okay, you have to have 800 square feet of open space, or 50, 50 square feet of open space per unit, whichever is greater. But 11C doesn't say, actually say how much of that has to be open to the public, or whether this is in addition to, or you have to provide more open, open space. And so when we look at this code, I mean, I, I don't understand what we're asking a developer to go through. My other question is about sort of parking, why, why are we limiting 50% requirement, or having a 50% reduction only for those units that are either 100-plus units or 10,000 square feet commercial? Why aren't we, why isn't this standardized for all development within MUR 70? If it's good for the large development, why isn't it seen to be good by the planning commission as good for all development? And so I, these are just questions I, are not explained, why the planning commission reached, made those specific decisions. And then sort of generally, in the sort of more comment I'd like to see, a couple of things I'd like to see, whether this is this ordinance or some future ordinance, one is I'd like to see something about vehicle loading zones within the building, or somehow on our right-of-way, to have vehicle loading zones so that we don't have UPS or Amazon delivery drivers parking bike lanes. It really bothers me when they do, and double park, and they think that bike lanes are a good place to park. Gets me angry. And, and so I, we need to figure, I think we need to figure out this, especially in sort of where we're expecting to see lots of dense development, and with the rise of delivery drivers, we need to find places, safe places for those delivery drivers to park without blocking a road or sections of the road. And then I think broadly, I think when we think about these buildings, one of the concerns that I, is slowly growing on me, and I haven't articulated this, is that most of the buildings are, look like, I mean, if you look at them from overhead, they look like City Hall. I mean, just sort of one big building, take up 90% of the space, maybe some open space, and we do require some open space. But for the people living there, I mean, there's not much, yes, we require solar access, but those solar access might only be like one window or two windows in each unit. There, we don't, we're not building around courtyards, we're not building around, I mean, around places where people want to be, we're building hallways. We're not building sort of things that look on to, I mean, look into each other, and, I mean, there, there's something about our code, I mean, it's not just shoreline's code, it's the code in Northwest and many other cities where it's like, okay, it's efficient to build blocks. But we should be, I, I mean, I think broadly, we should be building courtyards. I think that's what people want, that's what people need, and I don't think our code gets there. But I think that's a, that's not right now, that's not before us, but when we think about how we build, it's not just about number of units, it's about the quality of those units, about the quality of life of those units. And so how do we get there? And some of our measures, tree protection requirements, open space, I may try to get at that, but I think we can do better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, any response?
Yeah, I guess, let's see, so I, I hear your comments on the, the parameters for both the sub-area improvements as well as the open space. I think part of, some of the ambiguity is, you know, we were trying to strike a balance in terms of working with some of the standards that are currently in the code, which granted are written for the development agreement, which gives you a little more leeway in terms of negotiating some of those requirements, and incorporating them into the development standards, while also not duplicating existing requirements such a, you know, we have requirements for frontage improvements, you know, if you're developing, you're going to be building curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And then similar for open space, we have an open space requirement, and so we could, you know, we could look at some maybe more prescriptive standards, if that would, if that's council's direction to bring back. And then also, just to follow on your parking question also, the, I think the intention with the planning commission that it focused on maybe larger developments was that, you know, 50% is a decent-sized parking reduction, and so if you maybe have a, you know, a 20-unit building on a smaller lot, now you've reduced the parking down to just a few stalls potentially. And so the, I think the perception of the impact is greater there, but again, something we could, if, if council directs us to look at other potential options.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I'm generally, you know, like a lot of what I read, and I really appreciate the direction that we're going, and my council colleagues have brought up some great questions, so I look forward to seeing, you know, if and how you respond and, and bring, bring the proposal back to us. So I do have just a few questions, and I'll start with, within the parking reductions category, and I was really interested in reading about the, the transportation demand management plans. So just a couple of questions there. Is there a minimum threshold for what, or how much a plan would include? Like in the examples that you gave, like marketing and communications for alternative transportation options, like that in itself is probably, I would say, not enough? So do you have to hit multiple points in order to have a, a plan that qualifies?
Yeah, as written, it's pretty flexible, again, providing the ability to kind of scale up or down in terms of size and scope of a development. But oftentimes, yeah, the, a development's going to have a professional traffic engineer as part of their consultant team, preparing some of that analysis, and so I think they can oftentimes, I kind of go to what's worked in similar types of developments that they've worked on, and kind of come up with a menu list of potential options and things to propose.
So let's say we move forward, a, a development moves forward with a 50% reduced parking, and it becomes really clear that that's not working, their plan isn't working, there's a lot of spillover on the surrounding streets. What, how do we enforce this? I know we are kind of a complaint-based city, so would we sit back and wait for complaints to roll in? Could there be, could we establish regular checkpoints, maybe an annual report, let's say, to just sort of check in with how, how it's going?
Yeah, and so that's where we wrote in, the proposed language does include, it's really more kind of written into where it's at the city's request that a development would need to provide the parking utilization data, and sort of a check-in in terms of how the plan is performing. And then at that point in time, we could have more of a conversation with the development of how to potentially adapt and to change some of what they're doing to try to get better performance, and so that's.
I guess, realistically though, how, like waiting for the city to request that I guess realistically, though, how, like, waiting for the city to request that plan, uh, there's a capacity issue with, well, when are we actually gonna do that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, the, the city's Public Works Department has been collecting, um, I think annually, or at least somewhat, with some frequency, the on-street parking utilization in the station areas. And so I think that would be kind of one metric we could look at as, um, informing is to when, and kind of, we could pinpoint different areas in relation to the developments. And, um, like I say, kind of how that conversation with the developments. And that would potentially be one mechanism that I could see as kind of triggering that conversation.
Yeah, I, I just know that that is a real fear for existing, you know, members of our community uh, when we start talking about parking reductions and, and what the impact is gonna be in the surrounding areas. I had one clarifying thing for the folks who are watching from home, and even from, for myself. Um, when we talk about ground-floor amenities, could you give me a couple of examples of what that might be?
Yeah, so listed in the code, um, a, either a cafe or a restaurant would qualify as a ground-floor amenity, or, or a neighborhood amenity. Some type of nonprofit or office space, um, or a community space that someone, um, from the community could go in and rent, hold a meeting or an event in.
So not just something for the residents of that building, but for anybody in the neighborhood to access?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Popey.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two questions. One was on parking reduction, and the other was on ground-floor amenities. And Deputy Mayor Robertson copied and pasted those questions. So, no comment, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, other comments or questions from the council? I just have, I have, uh, Councilmember Collins, did you have anything? No, okay, all right, I have just a couple. Um, what's the advantage to taking TDR out?
I think right now, um, we're in this weird kind of limbo area where we don't have a formal program. And so should someone between, um, potentially adoption, and when we have the TDR kind of in place and ready to go, it, we'd be in that weird kind of limbo area without really being totally set up to, to utilize that. Um, so that was the, the thought process behind that.
Is, is the thought that we're gonna continue developing that program, and we would then re-insert it at some point?
Uh, that'd be one potential option, or it would be kind of a separate standalone program.
All right, I, I don't, I mean, the TDR fight has been going on for my, for my tenure on the council, and I, I kind of fight for it every time, and then it never gets implemented. And I'm, I'm quite frankly frustrated by that. Um, and I, what I fear will happen is if we take it out, I know no one's using it, I know it doesn't even exist yet, but I fear if we take it out, it'll just never get done. It just, it just won't, it won't be a priority. And, and what it is, I mean, some of you have heard this speech 50 times, but it's, it's an opportunity for us to basically do a service for the regional environment. We accept density credits, in exchange, we get money for things like parks and sidewalks, or whatever we need it. And we then allow more density in the city, so that stuff isn't built in the, in the exurbs. So we don't have farmland and forest developed. It's a way to incentivize development in the city. And it's been a pain in the neck and not functional for 30 years. And we keep trying new things, and then we sort of never carry the ball over the goal line. So I would hate to see that come out, although this is a personal hobby horse, and I heard you say that doesn't mean it's dead. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote against the package based upon that alone. But I would like to see it remain, because I don't see a harm to keeping it there, given that it's not a thing anyway. Um, my only other couple of quick comments are, I, I am delighted to see development agreements go away. Sitting through the process for Shoreline Place, we had these meetings with a couple of council members, like half the department heads in the city, and the CEO of the, of the builders thing, as we're debating over like where park benches go. It just seemed to me that that's not a good use of government for a city of 57,000. And we can, we can make that more efficient by making it an administrative process. And I, the only other comment is, I'm unfortunately not on the same page with Councilmember Mork. Although, so those building code environmental things, they're a good thing. Some of them I think are not a great thing, because you can put in showers, and all of a sudden, your building crosses the line from gold to platinum. Some of those things just don't make a giant environmental difference, others of them do. I would rather see us mandate the ones that do make a difference, and not have these complicated programs where you get points. The other reason I'm not totally on board with we must have them is that there is an inherent environmental benefit to getting housing near light rail. And that's what we're trying to do here. And if we're not seeing maximum-height buildings going in at all, then saying we'll only take the perfect means that we lose, you know, we lose the good. And I, I think we're better off building, you know, what, what, like, deep green, than we are mandating a lead platinum that won't get built. So I look forward to your rejoinder, Councilmember Mork. And first, Mr. Bauer, no, no response required, but, but is there anything you'd like to say? No, all right, Councilmember Mork.
I, we are not so far opposed, uh, Mayor. I see no point in lead, per se. I see no necessary point in district energy. I would just like to see some, we're, we are providing extra height. I would like to see some, some statement. For 90 feet, we're saying that it needs to be deep green. For 140 feet, it would seem like we would at least say it needs to be deep green, and, you know, just keeping it. So, or something. But it doesn't need to be lead, it doesn't need to be district energy, it doesn't need to be, uh, it for all, it may be appropriate to just say that these buildings would be required to follow the Clean Building Act, which is an act that applies to buildings over 20,000 square feet, and requires them to be 15% below the, the energy code requirement. So that may be good enough. So I, I'm sorry if I left the impression that, uh, I had a specific thing that must be. It's just, from my perspective, we, we, we should have something. And I would also like to echo your TDR comments. The, I so, so would like to see them going forward. And I too have been waiting many years to, to try to, uh, take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Right, this is due to come back on June 27th, was it coming back as an action item?
That's what is currently on the agenda planner, and so my question to council is, are you comfortable with that? If so, my request would be, council members need to submit any potential amendments that you have to the Planning Commission recommendation by this Friday, the 10th, in order for staff to have next week to work on that and incorporate into the staff report that would come out on the 20th. Andrew, does that work for you?
Yeah, that should work.
Some of us had some fairly specific items, but Councilmember Roberts at least was, was asking for some fairly broad re-looks. So I don't, so, Councilmember, how, how are you feeling about it? And how are we all feeling about it, coming back as an action item that's basically this, that we can then change in small ways versus saying, let's think some more?
I, I mean, I, I think things can work. I mean, my questions really are, my, the sort of broader questions I have are, when we talk about, it's sort of definition, I mean, almost definitional-type things. Um, are there limits to sort of the public infrastructure that has to be put in? I, I, I mean, I think that, I do hope that there's some analysis, or is in some response back to that question. Whether that's a sort of very broad brush, or if that's something that can be amended or massaged somehow, I, I, I don't know at this moment. I don't know what the, I don't think it necessarily blows up the entire work. I think it's just sort of looking at these things, and do we need to put a definition, I mean, a tighter definition there? But I mean, I, I looked, I mean, I'm gonna work with staff on this and see what happens, and I mean, this, but, I mean, broadly, this is much better than what we have currently, so.
All right, Mr. Bauer.
Um, yeah, so, um, we could look at perhaps an alternative where we put maybe some upper thresholds or upper limits in terms of the two. Um, I heard the most concern around the sub-area improvements, and then also the open space requirement. So perhaps there's a, an upper ceiling, um, where we can at least quantify, you know, a not-to-exceed parameter? Would that be something as an alternative that would be helpful?
I mean, that, yeah, I think that could work. Now, I'll be working with you and Debbie and the rest of the staff to get something right.
I apologize. Um, what, what I think would be cleanest is if we move forward with basically this proposal, and that staff not try to radically rework it and give us something new. That, for me, would really require another study session. So what I suggest we do, if we move forward with this package, and I'm not hearing anybody say no, is that it be basically this package, and then we submit amendments which can be voted on as amendments. So, so if Councilmember Roberts wants to radically rework things, that's great. But we won't get a recommendation from staff saying, here's the new thing that you vote on, we'll get the existing thing, and then we can debate as amendments. Does that, does that work? Okay, all right, so then we've all had ideas on this, it sounds like we need to get them in by this Friday, June 10th. And then we'll consider this as an action item on the 27th. Anything further on this matter? All right, I believe that concludes our first in, whoop, Councilmember Mork.
I work, I'm not gonna be able to get it done by the 10th. I can commit, though, to have some ideas in before Monday.
Does that work, Ms. Terry? All right.
That's fine, yes.
Great, thank you. So, folks, this was a late meeting, it is also just delightful to be back. I mean, it's, it's really been, been nice to sit up here with you again, and sort of see our old patterns come back. And I'm, I'm looking forward to many more of these to come. So we are adjourned for tonight, thank you.